Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting in November 10, 2008. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Grumney.
Here.
Commissioner Lunn.
Here.
Chair Reynolds.
Here.
And this is a time for public comments, and I do have one card this evening. Mr. Nick Kidway, if you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have five minutes.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newbury Park and Honorable and distinguished Chair. Last time I checked, still Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Good evening. Just want to draw the attention of the Commission that we had measure B here, and there was a similar measure in Oxnard, which was even worse for the taxpayers, business people, and the community at large, which also failed again, thank God. It was interesting that in yesterday's Los Angeles Times, in the real estate section, I believe, there was a letter about slow growth, and I was surprised to see that term used in a prestigious paper like the LA Times, and it also gave a link to the California Department of Planning, and it has a lot of reports, and it showed that they use the term "slow growth" and that majority of the initiatives that were proposed under that banner had failed in the state in November. I would like to remind the Commission that Concerned Citizens was born out of the building of the Circuit City, building at the corner of Hillcrest and Lynn Road. I was just a participant in it, but it was born out of one issue, and at the end of, when the building was approved, the people told me that I could take the name because they had a feeling that they would not keep fighting. And in retrospect, it seemed like that was a stupid thing to go against a building which is not that bad. But I think we will be vindicated, because as you know, Circuit City is almost going out of business, and they're closing all the Southern California stores, including that one. And so we are going to have a monstering city or a vacant building for God knows how long, with all the vacancies that we have, in a few months. And the city had the opportunity at that time, that's why the citizens in Lang Ranch and in that area were opposed to the zone change or allowing a single building that ruined that corner forever, and that spot was zoned for a gas station, and if they had a gas station, it would easily have been destroyed and the building returned to its natural state. I would like to take this opportunity, since slow growth is bandied around so much in our community, to let the citizens know, and maybe even some planning commissioners, that the original build-out for the city was 225 people, and it went down significantly because North Ranch was supposed to have condominiums as well as smaller homes, and in their wisdom, the Hawaiian Company decided to build these big homes. Then Dos Vientos was supposed to have as many as 8,000 to 9,000 homes, and it was downzoned by Mr. Fury and Mr. Shillo in 1989 to 2,225. And those were the big cutbacks, and that brought the build-out for the city to approximately 175,000, 170,000. Then we've had other downzoning too, so now the build-out is supposed to be 144,000, and we are 10,000 people away from them. People who do not travel or don't have an open eye, they don't really realize, I have customers in, like Santa Clarita, Palmdale, Lancaster, all these cities 25 years ago used to have 20,000 or even less, 15,000 in Palmdale, and they all have 150,000, 170,000 people now. Now that is growth. This city has had decent growth, and as one who has been critical of the city and still remains critical of the way the city is run, growth has not been an issue in this community for the last 12, 15 years, ever since I've been here. But politicians use it to advance themselves, and people should be sick and tired of that because there are real issues over here, and they are not addressed. Thank you, Honorable Chair, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Will the clerk please open Item 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case SUP 2008-70071, OTP 2008-70121. Applicant: OmniPoint Communications, Inc., T-Mobile. Request to allow installation of a wireless communications facility consisting of replacement of an existing SCE light standard with similar light standard and associated equipment to be placed above ground on adjacent residential property and to allow encroachment into the protected zones of two oak trees in association with the installation of a wireless facility. Location: 751 Northwest Lake Boulevard. Recommendation: Continue to a date uncertain.
And Ms. Noonan has a statement to make.
Yes, this is, as you notice, is a request to continue to a date uncertain, to allow the applicant to continue negotiations and also to look at some other potential alternative sites for this wireless facility. And so it is a continues to a date uncertain. However, we do have a request from a member of the public that would like to speak on the very limited purpose of the continuance, so I'm going to open it just for that limited purpose, to allow the speaker to speak, and then we'll close it and allow the Commission to deliberate whether to continue it.
Thank you. The card is from Mr. Nick Kidway. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you. I will not take that much time. This is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I will try to address the issue of the continuance and try to not stray from the subject so that clerk may not advise me, just like at the City Council meetings. Basically, I would really appreciate, and so many other citizens would appreciate, if we do not, we have a limited number of continuances, if later on you can ask staff to bring you a report as to how many times you've continued meetings and ended up with one case for the night, or maybe two cases for the night. It costs a lot of money to operate government, it costs a lot of money to be in this beautiful, long, gigantic hall, and this is not free money. It's from taxpayers, and you know, as Sarah Palin said, as the Mavericks said, I mean, we really need to cut down the cost of government and be responsive to the citizens, and do things for the benefit of the citizens, not for one corporation or an individual. And I would really appreciate, and I think a lot of other citizens would appreciate, if you look at your agenda and maybe go down to once a month or once a quarter meetings, because really, you don't have things on the agenda, and there's no point to meet for the sake of meeting, and especially in this big hall, when we have an energy crisis and everybody knows we have to be careful with how we spend our dollars. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And now I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Lunn?
I move to continue this case to a date uncertain.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion passed 5-0.
And will the clerk please open Item 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding the appeal of PPD 2007-70711. Applicant: Gerald and Judith Halweg. Appellant: Richard Salazar. Request to appeal an administrative decision which approved the construction of first and second floor additions with a balcony and a detached garage to an existing single-family dwelling. Location: 1262 Bouquet Circle.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask for a brief recess. If the Commissioners would stay at the dais, but look over the packet that was handed to us, so that everyone has the opportunity to check it. We'll try to go five minutes. If you need more time, let me know.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And Mr. Chang, good evening. Would you like to give the staff report?
Good evening Chair Reynolds and members of the commission. And for your consideration tonight, an appeal of precise plan of design application has been filed. And the location is at 1262 Bouquet Circle. If you can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. What the appellant is requesting is to appeal an administrative decision which approved the first and second floor addition with the balcony and detached garage. And staff would just like to provide a little background to this project. Back in November last year, the application was filed. And during the notification process, staff has received several letters of opposition opposing this project. And on September 11th of this year, administrative hearing was conducted. And after the hearing officer heard the testimonies between different parties, and the project was approved by the administrative hearing officers. And the findings and condition of the approval are attached to your staff report. And on September 19th of this year, Jason Neighbors at 1311 Harmony Court filed an appeal requesting the commission to reverse the decision. And what the applicant proposed to do for the project house is to add approximately 30 square feet on the first level, as well as 1,190 square feet on the second floor. And the applicant is also proposing to add a balcony as well as 600 square feet detached garage in the side yard area. So the total square footage after the addition will be approximately 3,666 square feet. And for this project, staff has also performed floor area ratio analysis. For the FAR for this project house with the addition will be 0.1. And lot size of this house is about .81 acres. And this is the area photo of the project locations. If you can follow the cursor. And here's where the detached garage is going to be. And basically, the addition will be on top of the existing garage. And on your right hand side, which will be the Harmony Court, they're approximately 44 feet higher than the subject house at Bouquet Circle. And the appellant is at the rear of the existing house, which is at this location. And this is a found elevation of existing house. And this picture was taken from Bouquet Circle, which is about approximately 20 feet lower than the subject house. And you can see on the top of the ridge line, there's appellant's house. In the middle, of course, is the applicant's house. And also the construct story pole to show approximately how high the addition and where the addition is going to be. And this is a left hand side of the house. And the garage basically is not facing the street, it's on the side of the house. So basically, you're looking at the left hand side of the house, looking at south. And you can see the slope on your left hand side. And the appellant basically will be on the left hand side, on top of a slope, which are about approximately 44 feet higher than the existing building pad at this point. And this picture staff would like to show is provide a broader perspective of a Covington tract. This picture was taken from a separate street. And you can see that on the right hand corner, that's where the Bouquet Circle is. And the applicant's house is at this location, which is approximately 20 feet higher than Bouquet Circle, but 44 feet lower than the applicant's house. And the next slide will show you a better, closer perspective of the relationship between the applicant as well as appellant's house. On top of the hill is appellant's house, which is about approximately 44 feet higher than the applicant's house, which is at the lower right hand corner. And if you can see the story pole. And after the additions, the proposed residence or with the addition will be still approximately 19 feet lower than the appellant's building pad. So from this picture, you can see the better relationship between the two building pads. And for this project, the appellant has raised five points on the grounds of appeal. Number one is that the second floor, what the applicant is proposing is not consistent nor compatible with the existing one-story house in the neighborhoods. And for this point, staff would like to address is that there are other two-story additions have been approved in this tract. And every second story addition will be reviewed on a case-by-case process. And what staff is looking at is the development pattern which has been approved for this tract. And what the pattern, according to staff's research, is that there are two-story houses on the east side of the track, on the east side of the street, and which in this case, the applicant's house on Bouquet Circle, it is on the east side. As well, there's other two stories on the east side of a separate street, Wilder Street. As well as there's a other two-story house at 1226 Bouquet Circle, which is two houses down on the same side of Bouquet Circle. So based on staff's research, staff believes that the proposed project still comply with the development pattern. And the second point is that the architectural design and elements are not consistent with the surrounding houses. And staff has reviewed the proposed design and believes the design as well as the architectural elements are compliant with the precise plan of design criterias. And staff would also like to point out that there are amount of the two-story houses within the tract. It is common for two-story elements on top of the existing garage. So based on that factor, staff, it is staff's opinion that the project, it is compliant with the design criteria as well as other two-story houses within the tract. For the ground of appeal, number three, the size and mass of the addition are out of character with the neighborhoods. And for this project, staff has do research and also compile square footage as well as floor area ratio analysis for the 18 houses within the surrounding. As you can see from this slide, that the subject, the proposed room addition with the existing house are within the range of, in terms of FAR, it's also a square footage. And for number four, granting of this appeal, this request will establish a precedent in this tract. As staff mentioned before that, every case is reviewed on a case-by-case analysis. And when residential project is submitted, staff will review the project based on the municipal core requirement as well as the precise plan of design criterias. And after staff's research, and staff believe that this project, it is consistent with other houses in the neighborhoods and will not create a precedent because there are similar additions have been approved on the east side of these streets. And there are other detached structures as well as a detached garage approved in this tract. Therefore, the approval of this project will not be a precedent setting. The last ground appeal, the appellant stated that the second floor addition will create a loss of privacy. The appellant believes that once the story, second story is built, the applicant will have access, a view looking into appellant's residence. For this, I would also appeal, staff would just like to respond that based on the plans as well as based on research, staff has performed the path difference between the appellant's and applicant's houses about 44 feet. And the relationship between the addition as well as the appellant's path will be 19 feet. And therefore, will be, the applicant will have a limited view into appellant's house due to the approximately 19 to 20 feet height differential. So therefore, staff does not believe that. There'll be, actually, staff believe that the the privacy issue will be limited due to the height difference. And for this project, appellant has raised the question of, a point about a case that was denied four years ago on Wilder Street. And staff would just like to make a comparison between the two cases. And the project back in four years ago, it was located at 1227 Wilder Street. And the additions are very similar to this project, which is a second story addition proposed to a one-story house on top of the existing garage. But for that case, the, for the address of 1227 Wilder Street, the location was located on the west side of the street, which according to development patterns, two-story houses were built on the east side. And because of the development patterns, the project was denied by the planning commission solely on the development pattern because on one side, there are two-story houses on the west side, which is predominantly should be limited to a one-story, single-family house. And for this project, since the project is on the east side of the street, and which staff has believed that according to the development patterns, the two stories could potentially be built on the east side of the street. But like staff mentioned, that every case is reviewed on a case-by-case scenarios. And according to staff's research, that this project will not alter or change the development pattern for this particular tract. And like staff mentioned before that, every precise plan of design application as well as residential project is reviewed and considered on a case-by-case basis. And staff does believe that this project comply with the precise plan of design criterias. And for recommendations, staff would just recommend the commission to deny the appeal of this project. Therefore, upholding the decision which approved this project. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff's really funny question.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Are there questions to staff? No questions? Okay, then I will go to the cards. And I have eight speakers' cards. So first will be the appellant. He'll have 15 minutes, and the applicant then will have 15 minutes. And each speaker after that will have four minutes. So if, Mr. Richard Salazar, if you come forward, state your name, the city residence, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Richard Salazar. I live at 1311 Harmony Court. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 43 years, having moved here in 1965. My background is in the field of law enforcement. I'm a retired 26-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department. For the last 18 years since my retirement, I've been involved in providing security services to clients in the Malibu, Paradise Cove area, and the Brentwood, Bell area of Los Angeles. I say this so that you can understand the important role of privacy and security issues have played in my career. Having said that, I sincerely hope all of you have had only positive experiences with police officers. Because if you haven't, this is your chance. I've placed a chart over by the monitor, and I don't know how well the commission can observe it, but one of the first pages that I have, and I don't have this on my PowerPoint. I don't know if this, I guess we're on PowerPoint, but I've given each of you a copy, basically, of what that chart is. And I'll give you a quick rundown. The green, there are 268 homes in the Covington development. The green show all the single stories, and the red show all the two-story homes. The greens, I believe there's 220 single-story homes, and the rest are two-story. The yellow denotes the, since in 43 years, the yellows, and if you can't see that, it's on this here, that's why I put these there. The yellow denotes the planning department's approval over the years. There's only five of them that they're using as precedents for this particular case. As you'll note, all, four of the five have extremely deep setbacks. And the additions that were approved on those virtually impact no one. They're either set way back, in fact, a lot of them you can't even see from the street. The lone one on Harmony Court, which is my street, was put in, I believe, in around 1981. And it impacts no one. It's right up against where you see the smaller picture. That whole area is the canyon and all the open space, so it impacts no one. And these five homes are totally different, so I can't understand why staff is using these as precedents for this particular case. The appellant's, or the applicant's home is directly behind mine. It's not on a big setback. His home comes up as elevated, my home comes down on a flag lot, so we're fairly close together. And I don't know how many people took the opportunity to go out and take a look at the situation, but you can see that when you go out there. So it's totally different than, than the precedence that staff is talking about. And that's why we're here now, for you to make the decision whether it's going to impact me negatively. I've got a quite lengthy presentation. I know now that I can't possibly get through it. That's why I'm glad I gave you the packets, and you can follow along with me as, as long as I have 25 minutes, so I better get moving here.
You have 15 minutes from the beginning of your talk.
I have 15 minutes.
You have 10 minutes left. You can see the.
It goes by fast, okay. It's going to be hard for me to see all the way over there, but I'll, I'll get to it. Staff alludes to what I wrote when I went down to apply for the hearing here. And it doesn't cover all the points, as you can see by the packets, so I'll try to get through as many as I can now to clarify things that are missing. Basically, I'm fighting against the pattern changes that will devalue my home. Those of you in the business, I think you'll see, in real estate business or anything, you'll see that what is, if the addition is approved, what will transpire will, will really impact the value of my house. Because it would, it would change things from an area-open view to having something.
For number four, the granting of this appeal, this request will establish a precedent in this tract. As staff mentioned before that every case is reviewed on case-by-case analysis. When residential project is submitted, staff will review the project based on the municipal code requirement as well as the precise plan of design criteria. And after staff's research, and staffs believe that this project, it is consistent with other houses in the neighborhoods and will not create a precedent because there are similar additions have been approved on east side of these streets. And there are other detached structures, as well as a detached garage, approved in this tract. Therefore, the approval of this project will not be a precedent setting. The last ground appeal, the appellant stated that the second story addition will create a loss of privacy. The appellant believes that once the story, second story is built, the applicant will have access, a view looking into appellant's residence. For this, I would also appeal, staff would just like to respond that based on the plans, as well as based on research staff has performed, the path difference between the appellant's and applicant's houses is about forty-four feet. And the relationship between the addition, as well as the appellant's path will be nineteen feet. And therefore, will be, the applicant will have a limited view into appellant's house due to the approximately nineteen to twenty feet high differential. So therefore, staff does not believe that. There'll be, actually, staff believe that the privacy issue will be limited due to the high difference. And for this project, appellant has raised the question of, a point about a case that was denied four years ago on Wilder Street. And staff would just like to make a comparison between the two cases. And the project back in four years ago, it was located at 1227 Wilder Street. And additions are very similar to this project, which is a second-story addition proposed to a one-story house on top of the existing garage. But for that case, the, for the address of 1227 Wilder Street, the location was located on the west side of the street, which according to development patterns, two-story houses were built on the east side. And because of the development patterns, the project was denied by the planning commission solely on the development pattern because on one side, there are two-story houses on the west side, which is predominantly should be limited to a one-story, single-family house. And for this project, since the project is on the east side of the street, which staff has believed that according to the development patterns, the two stories could potentially be built on the east side of the street. But like staff mentioned, that every case is reviewed on case-by-case scenarios. And according to staff's research, that this project will not alter or change the development pattern for this particular tract. And like staff mentioned before that, every precise plan of design application, as well as residential project, is reviewed and considered on a case-by-case basis. And staff does believe that this project complied with the precise plan of design criteria. And for recommendations, staff would just recommend the commission to deny the appeal of this project, therefore upholding the decision which approved this project. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff's really funny question.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Are there questions to staff? No questions? Okay, then I will go to the cards. And I have eight speakers' cards. So first will be the appellant. He'll have fifteen minutes, and the applicant then will have fifteen minutes. And each speaker after that will have four minutes. So if, Mr. Richard Salazar, if you come forward, state your name, a city resident, and you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Richard Salazar. I live at thirteen eleven Harmony Court. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for forty-three years, having moved here in nineteen sixty-five. My background is in the field of law enforcement. I'm a retired twenty-six-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department. For the last eighteen years since my retirement, I've been involved in providing security services to clients in the Malibu, Paradise Cove area, and the Brentwood, Bell area of Los Angeles. I say this so that you can understand the important role of privacy and security issues I've played in my career. Having said that, I sincerely hope all of you have had only positive experiences with police officers, because if you haven't, this is your chance. I've placed a chart over by the monitor, and I don't know how well the commission can observe it, but one of the first pages that I have, and I don't have this on my PowerPoint, I don't know if this, I guess we're on PowerPoint, but I've given each of you a copy, basically, of what that chart is. And I'll give you a quick rundown. The green, there are two-hundred-and-sixty-eight homes in the Kavington development. The green show all the single stories, and the red show all the two-story homes. The greens, I believe there's two-hundred-and-twenty single-story homes, and the rest are two-story. The yellow denotes the, since in forty-three years, the yellows, and if you can't see that, it's on this here, that's why I put these there. The yellow denotes the planning department's approval over the years. There's only five of them that they're using as precedents for this particular case. As you'll note, all, four of the five have extremely deep setbacks, and the additions that were approved on those virtually impact no one. They're either set way back, in fact, a lot of them you can't even see from the street. The lone one on Harmony Court, which is my street, was put in, I believe, in around nineteen eighty-one, and it impacts no one. It's right up against where you see the smaller picture. That whole area is the canyon and all the open space, so it impacts no one. And these five homes are totally different, so I can't understand why staff is using these as precedents for this particular case. The appellant's, or the applicant's home is directly behind mine. It's not on a big setback. His home comes up as elevated, my home comes down on a flag lot, so we're fairly close together. And I don't know how many people took the opportunity to go out and take a look at the situation, but you can see that when you go out there. So it's totally different than, than the precedents that staff is talking about. And that's why we're here now, for you to make the decision whether it's going to impact me negatively. I've got a quite lengthy presentation. I know now that I can't possibly get through it. That's why I'm glad I gave you the packets, and you can follow along with me as, as long as I have twenty-five minutes, so I better get moving here.
You have fifteen minutes from the beginning of your talk.
I have fifteen minutes.
You have ten minutes left. You can see the.
It goes by fast. It's going to be hard for me to see all the way over there, but I'll, I'll get to it. Staff alludes to what I wrote when I went down to apply for the hearing here, and it doesn't cover all the points, as you can see by the packet, so I'll try to get through as many as I can now to clarify things that are missing. Basically, I'm fighting against the pattern changes that will devalue my home. Those of you in the business, I think you'll see, in real estate business or anything, you'll see that what is, if the addition is approved, what will transpire will, will really impact the value of my house, because it would, it would change things from an airy, open view to having something right basically in my face. And anybody looking at it in real estate is going to say, hey, I'd rather have that if you had a choice to compare. The addition, as proposed, will devalue my home by providing a direct line of sight into my home, both from windows and from the balcony. It compromises my privacy and the security of my home. It creates an apartment-like environment for my home. Furthermore, the construction of the remote outbuilding devalues my home. It creates a farm-like environment unlike anything else in Kavington. There's nothing like it. You'd expect to see a building that large. It's twenty, it's fifteen feet high, twenty-seven feet wide, and twenty feet deep. It's, the applicant has stated it's for a classic car collection. He already has a two-car garage. He wants another three-car garage with this big looming structure there. And Kavington is just not the place for storing classic cars. I'm going to bring up a gazebo that the applicant put up prior to his applying for the second-story addition. Picture of the gazebo is on the screen. That picture was taken from inside my house, right on the threshold of my rear, rear French doors. I can see into the gazebo, he can see into my dining area. I'm sorry that I agree to that at this point. I had no idea it would be so high and be as large as it is. Rationale, the overview of my rationale for granting the appeal is justified by the following findings, and I won't go into them. They're on the screen, and you have them in front of you. That's on page five. Just for reference only, I'm, I'm going to talk about resolution. I'm sure you all know about City Council Resolution two thousand six dash one oh eight. And I won't read section A one A, but it has to do with what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. What is acceptable, as you know, is a single story amongst the majority of the single stories. When the majority are all single stories, what isn't acceptable is to put a two-story house in the middle of what are all single stories. And that's the case in Bokeh Circle. The next picture shows with red dots, excuse me, with red dots, shows all the single stories. There's, there's eleven of them. They're all on Bokeh Circle. The house that staff is going to use is a precedent that has an address on Bokeh Circle, but for all intent and purposes, isn't on Bokeh Circle. It's way back on an instant again. It impacts no one. It's a long driveway. You can't even see it from the street. The existing two-story house is not a precedent for the proposed addition, as I've just stated. It's located behind a one-story home. It is not visible from the street, as I stated. It has no independent property furnished on Bokeh Circle. It shares a driveway with the one-story in front of it. Here's a picture of, of the view from the street. I took that from the end of the cul-de-sac there. You don't even see the home. For reference again, Resolution two thousand six one oh eight, section A one C, has to do with scale, mass, compatibility in the neighborhood, and so forth. But you have that in front of you, so you can see what that is. The proposed addition fails criterion A one C one, requiring proportionality in size, mass, and weight. The proposed two-story addition is not proportionate in size, mass, and weight, because it would be the only two-story home with property furnished on Bokeh Circle, and the only two-story home visible from Bokeh Circle. The proposed remote outbuilding is not proportionate in size, mass, and weight, because it would be the only structure in Kavington that appears from the street to be detached. The only remote, as I stated, a farm-like outbuilding in Kavington. The only detached structure in Kavington that is placed forward at the street side of the lot. So it's going to be looming and readily visible. Here's a picture of the, where the garage would be. There's a steepened bank when they're coming up from Bokeh. The side of the garage is what's going to be visible from the street. As I stated before, it's a large structure, and there's nothing like it in all of Kavington. And, let's see here. This is, we'll get into detached structures that staff is using as precedent. You'll notice back on this sheet, and there on the, on the chart, that I have four. In forty-three years, there's only been four, four detached structures. The picture that's showing now is from the street. You don't even see, and this is the garage that's in Kavington. It's detached, but you don't even see it from the street. The aerial shows the, the garage way back from, setback from the street, and actually it appears to be attached to the house, it's so close. Remaining three Kavington precedents is, I've put in, in your packet, and I won't go into them in the interest of time, but they're consistent with this, the, the chart that I just showed you. Finding four, the proposed addition fails criterion A one C two, requiring blending well with neighboring structures and not overwhelming them with unbalanced size. And I've stated in my findings, one, two, and three, documents show how the proposed two-story structure blends poorly with neighboring structures. Only two-story structure with independent property furnished. And I've gone into all that, so I'll, I'll jump ahead. The following charts that I'm going to talk about show how the proposed addition creates aluminum intrusive apartment-like presence, invades my privacy, degrades security, conflicts with the established development pattern in, in Kavington. Here is the, here is a picture. This picture was taken from seven feet inside my property line and the property line of the residence behind me. There's a big difference between those two houses when you're standing up top. One is setback, it is not a looming presence as, as the proposed addition would be. Here is a picture of, of what the proposed addition would look like. It's been criticized in the past, but it was, it was made up for me by a PhD in structural engineering, and this is before story poles were put up. And it's uncanny how close it is to the shading of the poles after they were put up. And I must emphasize, the poles were only put up a few days ago. This all should have been done according to the precise plan of design at, at the initial public hearing notification. The second chart is without all the writing below, so it gives you more of a view of the house and, and what the structure is. And as I stated, story poles are erected after the design and after the administrative hearing, way late in this, in this whole program. The graphics on the previous page consist with, with the story poles. There's comparison charts and backup charts. Existing story does not create aluminum intrusive presence. This is the home that they're using as a precedent. This is taken from my neighbor's yard, has not even like what the proposed addition would, would do. The next chart is a picture of that house and, and the proposed addition. You can see the difference right there. This, this behind my house is just an in-your-face type situation. This next picture, addition creates aluminum intrusive presence that conflicts with the existing development pattern. When you see these two pictures, I ask you to look at one open and airy, one like this. Do you think that would have an impact on the value of my home if you were shown it? Or if you were intended to buy it? Which, which house would you rather spend more money on? Resolution two thousand six, again, I won't go into it, that's for reference only, but it has to do with neighborhood compatibility and hillside development. Proposition fails that criteria. The proposition fails to avoid appearing massive from adjacent building and yard areas as designed to prove that windows would create loss of privacy. That's in the resolution for neighboring buildings and yards. The balcony, again, would create a loss of privacy. They come out on the balcony, almost look directly into my house and, and my yard. The approved additions in Kavington are not valid precedents. They all have exposure to open areas. The proposed addition at twelve seventy-two Bokeh would be the only two-story addition that's surrounded by one-story houses on all sides. All surrounding homes are within forty-two feet elevation. Two-story addition on Lamont that they use as a precedent is set way back. That's on this chart here, and it's, it's lot number sixty-six. Did I have just another minute?
Yes. Okay, just wrap it up. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's set way back. You see the aerial view of it. This is a view from the street, the next chart. And you see, you can't even see that approved addition. I don't know when that was approved. I walked up the driveway. Here's the addition, this picture, that's on page thirty. You can see what's behind it. No impact whatsoever on anything, unlike what would be happening at my location. The four remaining Kavington precedents, I won't go into at the interest of time. You have backup pictures there on that. The granting of the appeal is justified by these six findings. I want to make it clear at this point, I, I, I am not complaining at all about the design. The architect did do a good design for, for the Kavington neighborhood. It does, so I'm withdrawing that, that complaint on it. But I, I think I've added maybe another one after I took that out. Anyway, that's, that completes my presentation. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Are there any questions, Mr. Salazar? No, Commissioner, add them.
Hello, Mr. Salazar.
Hello.
How are you? Thank you for your presentation, by the way. It's quite comprehensive.
Thank you.
In, in the staff report, I got the impression that you were citing a precedent that was set back in two thousand four by the planning commission, whereby, it seems to me they basically ratified a, a development pattern in Kavington, stating that one-story homes would be on the western or downslope side, and two-story homes would, according to development pattern, be on the eastern or upslope side. So what I would like to ask you is, how would that precedent that you cite apply to the upslope two-story addition that we're looking at tonight? And why would that conflict with the, the established development pattern?
Well, basically, it's because of the circumstances involved. If this is granted, as you state, on one side, which everybody talks about is the view side or downslope side, the other side is the upslope side. And the development pattern that was set up, you can readily understand so that the two-story homes can look over the one-story homes. In my case, it's going to be, if the addition is approved, a one-story home overlooking a two-story home. The development pattern is, as you say, but this is a unique situation where that doesn't apply. Everything on one side of the street is, can be, has to be a single story, and everything on the other side of the street can be a two-story. It has to be taken on a case-by-case basis. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And that's why we're here, so that you can decide that the overall pattern is, as you have stated. But this, this is, doesn't, this project doesn't fit that pattern.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Salazar? Commissioner Fisher?
Couple of questions. Are you part of the homeowners association that submitted a letter of approval?
No, there, for the record, there, there is no homeowners association. That, that went defunct years ago. There are a few people there that call themselves the homeowners association. They have get-togethers and so forth. And as a result of that, there really is no Kavington Architectural Committee. No plans have to be submitted to them. I talked to two architects that are doing remodeling in the area. They said, what are you talking about? Kavington Architectural Committee? We, we just supplied our, our paperwork, our plans to the city. We're not required to, to go to any Kavington Architectural Committee. So it doesn't really legally exist. There are people that call themselves the Kavington Architectural Committee. Now, I believe they're using that as a basis for work in the area. There's a big conflict because the, one of, one of the members of the so-called Architectural Committee is the architect on this project. And there's no wonder, it's his bread and butter. He's, he's going to bat, and I can't blame him.
So you don't pay dues or anything like that?
Not at all, no. And, and I've talked to people that are newly moved into the area. They're not, they're not given a copy of CCNRs. They don't have to sign anything for CCNR. So basically, there is no homeowners association. And I talked to staff, Mr. Chang, and he says even if there was, we wouldn't pay attention to it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Thanks for your presentation. Is there any reason why they would have weighed in on this if they don't exist? I'm just, I'm confused here.
Why, I'm sorry, sir.
Why they would have written a letter in regards to this project if, if they're an entity that doesn't exist?
Well, they exist, but not legally so. I mean, anything they do is not binding on anybody in the, in the development, is, is all I'm saying. There, there are three people, I understand, that call themselves that.
How did they find out about the project?
How did, how did who find out about?
The Architectural Committee, Kavington Homeowners Association.
Well, Mr. Whitting, the architect, is on that committee.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Salazar.
Thank you very much.
And the next speaker for the appellant, excuse me, for the applicant, who has fifteen minutes, is Mr. Gerald Hallwig. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and city residence.
If you don't mind, I'd like to set at that location so I can control the computer.
Would you stop the clock until he gets up there? Thank you, Lily.
Thank you. I, I'm Gerald Hallwig, and my wife Judith is here in the audience in the front row as well, and, and we do appreciate the opportunity to come and to speak to you tonight. I, just to give you a little bit of a personal background, I moved here in nineteen sixty-one and was among the first students to attend California Lutheran University in September the eleventh, nineteen sixty-one. And I went through that university, met my wife, and we had four children, and we put the four children through the university. We've been in the community, and just down below the house that we now own, we have other property here in the Thousand Oaks area as well. But as my statement on page eighteen and nineteen, which I entitled, "Response to Mr. Salazar's Appeal Concerns," just to highlight a couple of items there, we've been trying to get into the Kavington area with a, a good view for many years. Actually, it goes back more than thirty years. And working as much as I do, I don't always get an opportunity to see the houses with the good views come up for sale, and when they do, they sell quickly, and that's just exactly like the one that we bought. We had to pay a premium to get into it, and we had to buy it fast in order to secure the, the view that we, we now have. We knew that it was a one-story house. We knew that it was on the east side of the street, so therefore, we had a feeling as though we would not have any difficulty to add to this, since we do have our four children. And of course, two of them are married with children, and two are still single. But we need and want a house that has enough bedrooms that, that if they want to come and spend the weekend, or come and spend an evening, they are welcome to do so. We're very proud that all of our children have become professionals, and, and two have settled here in the Canal Valley, and the other two are also thinking about returning as well, which is one of the reasons why we're about to make an offer on another home in Kavington. The items that I would like to first just go through with my presentation, and then I'll, I'll comment a little bit about Mr. Salazar's comments that he made earlier. And that is that I have And that is that I have tried to organize these in an order that coincides with Mr. Salazar's written concerns, which you will find on page seventeen. I can't speak a whole lot about the other information that you have in front of you that was recently given to you, for when I picked up the packets, I thought they were all-inclusive, and none of the material that Mr. Salazar spoke about were in this packet, so I wasn't aware of that information. But I think my presentation will cover it anyhow. This is our particular home, looking to the south, and again, our home looking to the northeast. That is our gazebo that sets up there, of which, to the left of it, is an addition to a home that is on Harmony Court, and then Dr. Berry, I believe it was, that built the infinity pool to the left of that. And then, Mr. Salazar's home is not visible in this particular photograph. This is the view that we have looking to the west, and as you can see, which is one of the reasons why I was very happy to pay a premium for this lot, for the mere sake that you can see the ocean and you can see the towers in Oxnard and beyond. This happens to be a view of the southwest-oriented view, looking over top of the neighbors across the street on the downslope. And then this is a view that is looking to the east, standing on our building pad, looking up to the upper right corner, which, if you follow the cursor, this particular home is the outermost point of Mr. Salazar's residence. And until the last hearing, my wife Judy and I never bothered about looking up at that location, and when we did, we couldn't see anything because we think that that glass must be tinted, because you can't see into it until the sunrise. But since that hearing, we deliberately tried to see if, in fact, we could see any portion of that. And it's extremely difficult from our home. The particular view that we have here looks over onto where I have two of the vehicles and where the detached garage will be seated. And if you look from the bouquet circle, looking up, the trees that were existing pretty much hide the west view of the detached garage, proposed detached garage. The eastern view is basically a little portion of the roof because the east wall of the garage will be adjacent to the steep embankment. We have, Judy and I have walked and driven all of the Kavington track, 1585, and your pages twenty through twenty-three is a summary of all of the homes that we observed. The addresses plotted out onto the map, as well as the identification for a one-story, two-story, or any additions, whether they be additions to the one-story or two-story. The bottom summary of this is, is that there are 28% of the homes that have two stories, and 72% have one story. That's a little different than what you see on your paper, only because I discovered tonight that there are two two-story flag lots that I was unable to get onto the property in order to see, that they were changed from a one-story to a two-story. Now, the two-story homes that you can see on the presentation right now are all two-story homes that are basically within a good baseball throw from Mr. Salazar's home or Harmony Court. And a number of these homes, you'll see when you drive through the Kavington area, that are a multitude of different configurations and designs. I believe this particular house is right down at the end of Harmony Court. And there's balconies, as well as larger structures on these two-story additions. And I just wanted to point out that there are a number of two-story homes throughout the development. Now, this is standing in our backyard, which, we don't have much of a backyard, but we're proud of what we've got. And we're looking up onto our property, up to Mr. Salazar's fence, and the further western portion of his house. And that's the view that we have right now of our, from our home. Again, this is farther into our building pad, in front of our garage, and you can see I have my car in front of where I've taken this photograph. You still don't see much of Mr. Salazar's house. And then I've taken photographs here from Bouquet Circle, and if you get back farther and up farther, then you can see a little bit more of Mr. Salazar and his neighbor's home. Again, this is from our bedroom in our home, standing up, five foot nine, viewing up to his home. And that's the typical view that we see. We don't look at it because we have no reason to look at it, we don't see anything that we want to look at. And so therefore, I have gone up to the fence line where the cursor is right now, and I have taken photographs at this level, which is a little bit less than his pad. It's about five feet below his pad. And when I took the photographs, this is looking south, and then we turn and look to the west, there is our house down below, which is actually just about fifty-two feet from line of sight of his pad to our pad. And I drew in the red on top of the story poles, and just so the record is very clear, I was just recently asked to put up story poles. If I would have been asked to put up story poles, I would have put them up the next day. I was asked recently, I put them up. They blew down, I put them up again. The red line that is there is the ridge of the roof. The yellow is the outlining of the roof of the second floor, which is the addition that we proposed to build. The red, again, is the ridge, and it goes both from south to north and then turns from west to east. And then, looking at above the fence, now, this is if you go up to Mr. Salazar's fence again, and you look from above the fence, and you include the ridge and the boundary of the roof structure for the second floor, you can see that that ridge is approximately a foot above, not quite a foot, above the basketball backstop of the neighbors across the street, John and Shelley. And that particular room addition, and addition to the roof, in no way disturbs or blocks anybody's view. It certainly would never deevaluate anybody's property. That view is still just as pristine and beautiful as you look over top of our addition, which the only thing you would see that the addition would even block would be a couple of bedroom windows down below and the neighbors across the street, and the garage to John and Shelley. And I don't see anybody ever wanting to look into those. Now, this is another shot from Sapra, and this is at the same elevation as our pad, looking across to our home, as you can see there, I identified it, and Mr. Salazar's outer western peak at the top, along with our gazebo to the left, and our gazebo is still below his pad. And there we put in the ridge of the roof line and the perimeter of the second floor addition. And as you can see, that's going to disturb no one. I would like to share with you one other photograph, and down below the stairs and the arches is where the proposed detached garage would go. You can see the two automobiles down at the bottom of the hill, and that's where we proposed the detached garage. It is going to be extremely difficult for Mr. Salazar or to even see the garage, let alone feel as though that's an obstruction or anything that could possibly deevaluate his property. We feel very strongly that everything that we are doing to improve the property is a real asset to the community and is going to improve the values to all of the homes in the community. It is not going to be one of these that is going to be overbuilt. It's a modest-sized home. It's the size of a home that we need. It certainly is not going to have the orange-colored roof that's going to stand out like you've seen earlier this evening. It is going to be a well-earth tone blended. The color of the house will be the same color earth tones that exists on the house now. There is, there is no balcony that faces to the east, which is the direction that Mr. Salazar's home is at. So I don't understand why he has a feeling as though anybody would be invading his privacy. We virtually didn't know he existed up there until one day he came to the edge of the fence. And we just don't have any desire to look into our hill in the back. We have nothing to show that direction. I can't see whether or not I'm out of time or not.
Yes, you are. If you wrap up, please.
All right, very good. The other items that I have, I think, is pretty well clearly stated on pages eighteen and nineteen. But Judy and I feel as though everything we've done to this particular location, including the cleaning up of the property, I have taken down forty-two trees off of the property, some of them very large trees. I have planted none of the trees that you see in the photograph that's up on the board now. Those trees all existed. The only thing we have done is, we've built watering wells to preserve water on the trees and on the plants. And so therefore, we've taken the natural stone and brought stone in in order to build these wells to conserve water.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Mr. Hallwig? Any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Dan Whitting, and you have four minutes. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, please.
Dan Whitting, Thousand Oaks. I live on Sapra Street. And I've been a twenty-eight-year resident of Thousand Oaks. My wife's family has been a fifty-year resident here, and I've lived in Kavington for twenty years. I actually wrote out a whole lot of responses to all of the criteria that's been submitted. I read staff's report and thought, gee, they said exactly the same thing I was going to say, so I can avoid, I think, all of that. The only thing I might point out is the one comment about staff saying that the house is nineteen feet below Mr. Salazar's pad. That's actually the top of the ridge. If you look at from the eye level of the second floor, the eye level is twenty-five feet below Mr. Salazar's lot. So the idea of intrusion of privacy, from my standpoint, doesn't seem to exist. I did provide a site section through the upper lot, his lot, and the lot below, and it shows that if there's any intrusion whatsoever, I guess it would be if he wanted to come to the edge of his yard and wanted to look into their windows, not the opposite direction. I think the other thing that was brought up, I think, by Commissioner London, and I think Commissioner Fisher, had to do with the homeowners' association. There are CCNRs that were established when this development was approved, and I know Chair Reynolds knows very well of what can happen to those sometimes. But, and those CCNRs do mandate that there be an architectural committee. There is no common area to be maintained, so there is no real need for association dues. It is a voluntary association, and I would believe that probably seventy-five percent of those pay their very minimal fee, because what they really get is a newsletter about four times a year, saying what's going on in the area. The Architectural Committee, and yes, I am a member of it, I have been for quite a while, I did not review this project, obviously, because it would have been a conflict of interest, but the other two members did. They went up, they looked at it, they had the plans in hand, and they are the ones that approved it because it was based on what even as I, as an architectural committee member, has maintained and has looked at projects of, it's a non-view side of the street. I live in a two-story house on a non-view side of the street, I happen to have a terrific view. I have two stories next to me and one across the street. So it's not really a single-story neighborhood, but a very mixed neighborhood of about a thirty-seventy. So, other than that, I'm not too sure what else you'd like me to say. I would like to say that the exhibit that Mr. Salazar showed of looking at a house imposed, second story, number one, it's not a gable roof, it's a hip roof. He was showing big gables staring at you. And in my opinion, as an architect for over thirty years, it is out of scale. It's way too high, and it's almost like you're looking right into the house instead of down on the house. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to say. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions to the speaker? Commissioner Adam?
Good evening. Did you get a chance to look at Mr. Salazar's presentation?
That's the one that I was mentioning, where this house is not a gable roof, it's a hip roof. So the roof is actually sloping away from you instead of this big peak sticking up. And it almost looks as though you're halfway down the hill looking at the house instead of up on top looking down on the house. So I think it's out of scale, it's out of proportion. As an architect, it isn't something I would have drawn, and that's why I did the site section for you that actually shows the sightline views of that.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Again, referring to Mr. Salazar's page twenty-three, is the edge of the addition, the second-story addition, right to the edge of the roof, or is it set back, like the story poles?
Well, on his side, it's right to the edge of the wall below. On the other side, the balcony wraps around, and we have other single-story elements. My house is very similar to that, too, where on one side it's a full two-story house, and on the other side, there's one-story massing that goes around it.
So if there's an overhang of the roof, this two-story addition is on that, then?
No, it's set even with the wall, not with the overhang.
Oh, okay, with the wall, okay. So there is an overhang of the roof?
No, the second floor doesn't cantilever past the first floor. It's in line with, on that side.
It's in line with?
Correct.
The edge, not, let's say, the two feet of the roof overhang or something like that?
No.
Also, are your CCNRs deeded to your properties, then?
Well, they are. I mean, if somebody wanted to, obviously, file a lawsuit, it would have to be an individual filing it, similar to your association now, so that would be the case.
Okay, but they are deeded, so therefore, when a house is purchased, the relator or the ESCO company should supply?
Well, they should, and certainly the quote "non-association," it's voluntary, provides them to anyone who calls. My wife was president of it for five years, so, she isn't now, but, so, I'm very familiar with those CCNRs, and we certainly provide them with all the assistance we can when they call and ask about it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Whitting. The next speaker is Judy Hallwig. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and city residence, please, and you also have four minutes.
My name is Judy Hallwig, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I live with Mr. Hallwig at 1262 Bouquet Circle. I don't have a lot, just one thing I'd like to say is that I think the bright red roof on that kind of exaggerates what it's going to look like, number one. I think that's kind of an I think that's kind of an over-saturation. Number two, we do pay dues to a homeowners' association. So maybe somebody's illegally collecting funds, I'm not sure what's going on there. But we have a nice neighborhood party once a year, which we've enjoyed going to for the past two years. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions, Mrs. Howick? Thank you very much. Next speaker is Glenn Hafskol. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. If you've come forward and state your name and city residence.
Okay, my name is Glenn Hafshold.
Good evening.
Good evening. And I live at thirteen forty-four Harmony Court. And I can't see either of these properties. I'm here because I'm concerned about protecting the value of my property. And from what I've heard tonight, it's a good thing I came. And I appreciate Mr. Adams' questions because that's exactly my concern, is what is the precedent that's being set here? The problem with talking about a view side and a hillside or talking about east and west sides of the street is that it forgets that there are other streets. And if you take a look at five residences, and I'll give them to you, thirteen twenty-eight Harmony, thirteen fifteen Harmony, thirteen eleven, twelve sixty-two Bouquet, twelve sixty-three Bouquet, you can draw a line from one to the other. And what you find is that the first two are on the opposite sides of Harmony. The second two are, in fact, adjacent to one another on the eastern side or on the western side of Harmony. And yet, if one built on top, such as the proposed addition, they would be impacting the view of the people next door. The third and fourth properties are, in fact, the properties that are here, and they're on different streets. And the last two, of course, are on opposite sides of Bouquet. But if you look at what happens, every one of those homes is about twenty feet, thirty feet difference in elevation from one to the other. And this chain that goes from one house to another, to another, to another is characteristic in Kevington. And you can see it in one of the photographs that Mr. Salazar had. And so the pattern I'm trying to convey is that there is a series of homes, a series of relationships of one relative to another, one's up slope from one house and down slope from another. So that if somebody in the middle of this, such as twelve sixty-two Bouquet, decides to build a second story, they're changing the development pattern in the Kevington area. And the concern that I have is that we're not, the development pattern is being portrayed very simply, east and west, okay? View side and hillside. And why is this important? Why am I making this point about this change? The reason is property value. The houses that are designed, like thirteen eleven Harmony, that house has been designed to take advantage of its view, so its back opens up. And you get in that house and you see a wide panorama. And when somebody then builds a house so that there is a line of sight into your property, and as you saw, that picture shows that there is a line of sight, that that becomes very invasive, and that affects property values. And the people who come to buy that house will pay less for it. And if the precedent is set that you can justify a second-story home simply because there are other second-story homes in the area, that's not considering on a case-by-case basis. That's just saying it applies everywhere because of our second-story homes or detached structures. It's okay because there are other detached structures. If you look at those photographs, they're entirely different in character. And that's what we have to recognize. That's it, I guess. Thank you.
Are there any questions to the speaker?
Any questions.
Thank you.
All right.
The next speaker is T. Burry, M.D. Come forward, state your name and city residence, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Burry. I live in the Kevington neighborhood here in Thousand Oaks. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing me to speak at this matter. I first want to clarify a few things that were said at a previous meeting where you were not present. We were told by the neighborhood that Mr. Howick implied that he had discussed his construction with us and that we did not have any objections to his construction. The truth is, we never spoke to him about the construction at all. We did speak to him about his gazebo, which he started constructing on top of the swill without any permit. And when he was reported by one of the neighbors, he subsequently got a permit. I discussed it with Mr. Howick, I discussed it with Matt Chang. And although we didn't object to the gazebo, we did have concerns about possible trees in the future. And in the last few weeks, a lot of big trees, including pine trees, have been planted around the gazebo and in that slope, and eventually, they will obstruct everybody's view. The other issue at the first meeting was that Mr. Whitting, who is Mr. Howick's architect, is also on the quote-unquote Architectural Committee. And to answer Mr. Lund's question, the reason why the Architectural Committee knows about it is because Mr. Whitting is part of that Architectural Committee. And the only projects the Architectural Committee reviews are the ones that Mr. Whitting draws. None of the other projects in our neighborhood have even heard of the Architectural Committee or submitted anything to the Architectural Committee. There is no homeowners. The new people who buy the homes do not get CCNRs. There is no legal entity there. And Mr. Whitting, representing Mr. Howick and then also speaking for the Architectural Committee, is a conflict of interest. As far as the detached garage, there are a few detached structures in the neighborhood. They are all not in view of the public areas. You cannot see a single one of those structures. The proposed garage is, however, a one-and-a-half to two-story detached building. None of those exist in the neighborhood. None of those exist, whether in view of the public. On top of that, I don't know why we're discussing any of this because the structure is not legal as it's designed. There is no five-foot setback to the toe of the slope. There's no five-foot setback to the bottom of the slope on the other end. It cannot be constructed the way it's designed. So it will need to be modified radically to even be legal. The upslope wall of the garage will be buried eight foot underground. We were told when we built our pool by Matt Chang that we cannot touch the natural slope. Mr. Howick wants to dig eight feet into the natural slope to build his garage. So there's a lot of stuff that is not right with the design. And Mr. Whitting is an outstanding architect. He knows exactly what is legal and what is not. It is not to code, it cannot be built to code as it is designed. The photos Mr. Howick shows are all conveniently taken from his pad in front of his garage. What he really should have done to show you the view is stand on the top of his roof and then take a picture because that would show the real view that he has in Mr. Salazar's house. As far as east and west, if you look at that picture Mr. Salazar drew, there's no such thing as east and west of the street. There is south of the street, north of the street, southeastern street, northeast of the street. And all the homes with two stories that Mr. Howick showed have nothing behind them. They have open space or hillside or something, nothing else behind them. Mr. Howick has one, two, three homes above him that all staggered, as Mr. Hafskol said, and he will obstruct Mr. Salazar's view. And Mr. Salazar, who's not really on the view side, can build a second story. He will impact Gloria's view, can build a second story, and then they will impact the view above it. It really doesn't make any sense. Then finally, the committee a couple of years ago denied a second story at the bottom of Wilder, where there's really no view at all. And it was because it was not in keeping because you can see there's no two-story homes anywhere down at the bottom.
Would you please wrap up? Your time is up.
That's fine, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Dr. Burry? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Nick Kidway. Come forward, state your name and city residence, please.
Nick Egbal Kidway. Proud to say a twenty-nine-year resident of Newbury Park slash Thousand Oaks. Honorable distinguished Chair Darryl Reynolds, planning commissioners. What a wonderful presentation by both the applicant and the appellant. I mean, this is what makes Thousand Oaks so special. And what it also makes it special is that the appeal fees have gone up to nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand-plus dollars. Most of the people who come to these, end up appealing, are residents that like myself or the Salazars. And it's really unconscionable that the city would recoup all its fees, so-called. And I would implore the planning commission to look into reducing the cost of doing business. That's what I've said. Who needs to be in this big chamber? And also to reduce the fees. I also want to thank the commission for the due diligence in reading the packet, which I've seen a lot of times not being read, and taking the time. I guess we had the luxury when we only have one case to deliberate on. It's interesting that the appellant bought this property because of the view and the potential of building on it. And one of the things that is lacking the city, and our neighboring city of Westlake Village has made up for it, is to have a view ordinance. We've been told by the previous city attorney that it would be unconstitutional to have a view ordinance. But Westlake Village, I had read some time ago, and there are some other cities in Newport Beach, I believe, that have a view ordinance. And it's, these are the kind of things, that's one of the reasons I'm a critic of the city, is that this is the job of staff and the city to have clear delineations and demarcations so that you are not left holding the bag and grasping at straws to come up with findings for denial or for acceptance. And so that's why I implore the planning commission to ask staff to come up with a view ordinance so we do not have this problem. It's, the word that has not been mentioned tonight is mansionization. A lot of citizens in this city, including myself, are concerned that we can't go the way of not the San Fernando Valley, but the San Gabriel Valley. I mean, if you go into San Gabriel Valley, I mean, every third house, it seems like, in many neighborhoods, it just has no setbacks and it has big, I mean, it just doesn't belong there. They've taken these little, small homes and made into very nice, big mansions. And there has been said, one of the second-story additions that I spoke about in nineteen ninety-three, I believe, the gentleman owned asphalt business. And we were told that if this is approved, up and down, this is the old neighborhood on Gainesboro and Moor Park Road, that every third home would be mansionized or built like that. But it did not happen. But by the same token, you have to be prudent since there is no rule against it, and precedent is something that the courts look at. So I know most people would not come and speak on a neighborhood matter because whatever you say, you'll end up losing because you're going to get some people upset. So I'm glad that I'm not sitting on the other side. And I do appreciate the wonderful presentations that have been made by both sides. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Other questions, Speaker? Thank you very much. And the last speaker is Helen McKinnon. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, please, and you have four minutes.
My name is Helen McKinnon. I live in Kevington. I'm one of the original owners.
Would you pull the microphone down so we can hear you? Thank you.
I'm one of the original owners. Moved in July fourth, nineteen sixty-eight. We were very fortunate to be able to get a house in Kevington. And there were still a lot of lots. And they were designed so that everybody wasn't looking into anybody's house. We all have sides up and sides down. I have side down and over and down again. But our view is great. The only thing I have to say is that I don't agree with the big buildings because most of the houses are not, there's only, I think we have one house that we call the Schloss that is bigger than all the others in the development. And I don't think it's a good idea to build something that's too big in an area or too small either. People are supposed to be notified, which sometimes they are. And of course, everything else is pretty well taken care of by the other people. So I would say it's not consistent with the rest of the houses because the detached garage, and these houses were originally built not to have offices in them. They were one-family homes. And I see we have some new, we have a new one that's being built, an addition. It looks like the same size of the one that's already there. So it's been approved and it's almost finished. And I imagine you're the people that approved it. But I don't approve of houses not conforming or garages either because some of the houses had three-car garages. Most of them have two. And there are some two-story houses on flag lots, and they were built in the beginning. They weren't built later. They're up on the top of Wilder, no, not Wilder. One of the streets. And then there's one on Woodridge that's on a flag lot. But that has two lots, and they have a lot behind that house. It's a two-story, but it's on the hillside. And there's a lot that's flat behind it because it was bought with the house. Let's see, and then on Bouquet, the, I guess it would be the south, the one that's up the hill and it's completely separate from everything else. That's on Bouquet. And then the corner house on Bouquet and Sapra, two-story, two-story on the corner. And then, of course, there are a couple going up Sapra that are two stories. So I think that if you have a lot of, have mostly one-story houses, you shouldn't be putting two stories in, except what was originally made. And that hill was built, those setbacks, the houses and the hills going down, were built because the development that was put in near us, near Kevington, had problems with the hill coming down. So they made sure that ours would be drained right and not have any flooding. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Any questions? Thank you. Do you have a question? And I also have nine blue statement cards from homeowners in the area. And I have passed them between the commissions so they've all read all the notes that you put on the backside. And with that, we'll go back to staff. Mr. Chang?
Staff would just like to address a response, a couple of points. First of all is the detached buildings. What staff provided in the staff report that there are other detached buildings in the tract, whether they are visible from the street or not. Regarding these detached buildings, as staff mentioned earlier, that the subject house is, subject, actually, building pad is about approximately twenty feet higher than Bouquet Circle. So if you just look at from a street perspective, you won't see the building. And you look at horizontally, you just look at the hillside. And the other thing, what staff liked to mention that, even though the detached building, if you want to see that, you could see the detached building. However, the detached building does comply with the design criteria, just like so many buildings or residents in the tract or in the neighborhoods. It's not a matter of whether it's visible or not, it's about whether the project complied with the design criterias, whether they have the same architectural elements. That's what staff's looking at. And regarding the view issues, as many people here are aware that the city doesn't protect private view. So at this point, what staff's looking at is about the development patterns as a whole tract, as well as on Bouquet Circles. And according to staff's research, as well as evidenced by the board in front of you, that there are other two stories on the east side of the streets, whether it be on Sapra Street, Wilders, or Bouquet Circles. So there are other two stories on the east side of the streets. And that concludes staff's comment.
Thank you. Are there comments? Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few responses as well. Staff requested that the appellant provide all information needed for this appeal, including any photos, and those were all included in your packet. There were comments tonight about the fact that you only had a limited amount of material in the packet, and obviously, you were handed a significant amount of information tonight. We did ask for that information, and all the information that was provided to staff was provided in the packet. Secondly, story polls are an additional source of information, an additional tool for making an informed decision. They are not a required element. In this particular case, staff did feel that, given the fact that this case was appealed to the planning commission for consideration, that was an appropriate additional request. request, and as is obvious, they were quickly installed. But again, I cite that as an additional source of information, not a required one. Finally, there was a comment about a five-foot setback for the detached structure. In this particular case, that's being built into the hillside with a retaining wall on the upslope side, therefore, that five-foot setback is not applicable to that detached structure. And then, just to follow up on a few comments that Mr. Chang made, when staff looked at this case, we looked at it from a broad perspective, citing the fact that there are many two-story structures on the east side of streets, and that is borne out, in fact, even from the material provided by the appellant. There are other detached structures in the tract as well. And then, as was also mentioned by Mr. Chang, when we look at specific houses like this and additions to them, we look very carefully at compatibility. That's really the heart of the precise plan of design guidelines. And in that case, we do look at the size of the proposed structure. In this case, it's within the range of the size of the nearest 18 houses. It's within the floor area ratio of the nearest 18 houses. And so in our opinion, we look at it from those broad perspectives. It's consistent with the neighborhood, and that's why staff had recommended approval both at the administrative hearing and, of course, this evening. And that's all I had at this time.
Thank you. And Ms. Noonan has a statement to make.
Just a couple of comments to follow up on Mr. Chang reindicated. We, city does not have a view shed protection ordinance, and in fact, this was looked at a few years ago, probably about three and a half years ago. It was also reviewed by the Residents' Roundtable as to whether or not they wanted to request City Council to adopt a view shed protection ordinance. And after their investigation and staff's investigation, the Residents' Roundtable concurred with staff that it wasn't necessary nor desired to have a view shed protection ordinance in the city. I also wanted to touch briefly about the discussion regarding the CCNRs and Architectural Committee. I know there's been a lot of discussion on that, but I wanted to remind the Commission that regardless of whether an Architectural Committee exists or not, that's really irrelevant to the city's determination as to whether to approve it or not. While cities encourage, while the city encourages applicants to contact their homeowners association and get permission to build whatever it is that they want to build, at the end of the day, the city does not base its decision whether to approve the project or not based on the homeowners association approval or not. That's really a separate issue that the property owner would have to go through, so it's really irrelevant to your consideration tonight. And, oh, and then there was another question as to, with respect to the appeal fees, and I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that although $939 does seem like a lot of money, it is still far less than what the total cost is to the city to process these appeals.
Thank you. And questions to staff? Commissioner Adam?
Just one, I guess, for Mr. Town. Dr. Burry mentioned about the detached dwelling, a concern about encroachment into the slope. Can you address that, please?
It's my understanding that the detached structure is located at the base of the slope, and then it's backfilled with material, with a retaining wall between it and the slope. Perhaps Mr. Chang can elaborate on that further?
On one side of the detached structure, the detached building is going to use part of a building wall as a retaining wall to hold the downhill slope, and which, if, the project, if approved, still need to go to the Building Department, which will review by our Building Plan Checker, as well as Senior Engineer. So at this point, what is provided is they're going to use part of a building wall to be a retaining wall to hold the downhill slope. So technically, people have done in the past, and in this case, this project, if approved, still need to go to Building Division for a review. So what staff are looking at this point is for a more setback, as well as architectural review standpoint, not necessarily a structural engineering review standpoint.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, Mr. Chang, has anybody on Boquet Circle opposed this particular project?
There's one letter of opposition submitted, is on page 31 of your staff report, there's one homeowner on 1237 Boquet Circle submitted opposing this project.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chang, has this addition met all city required setbacks?
It does meet the municipal setback requirement related to planning development setback, not necessarily a building, but it does meet a planning and development setback, as well as a building hire requirement.
Okay. And the two-story setbacks and second-story setback and that thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, the appellant has the right rebuttal of five minutes. If you'd come forward again and state your name and City Residence.
For the record, my name again is Richard Salazar. I didn't write down all the points that I would want to rebut, I'll try to remember things that were said by both the applicant and the architect. I'm not against development. I'm not against, Mr. Hallwig has every right to develop his property. I question the need that he has to put a two-story addition on. He's got plenty of room to go horizontally. I don't blame him for wanting to put a two-story up. I would probably want to also, because it would increase the value and enjoy, and my enjoyment of it. But he's doing it to the expense of devaluing my home and interrupting the enjoyment of my view. He has a single-story home, the same as I do, and his single-story home, I'm sure, was placed there by the original developers, because they were wise enough to know that if they put a two-story home up there, it would impact my home above it. Naturally, they're going to get a lot more money if they put a two-story home up for Mr. Hallwig's houses, and they didn't do that. And this is basically the development pattern around there. The original planners did an excellent job. You can see that in 43 years, there's only been five approved two-story additions. None of them look like my circumstances. I'm going to be looking over a two-story home. I don't, I've got plenty of time, but I don't know what to say. I think I've said it all before. As far as the packet's concerned, and what I submitted, as Mr. Town stated, I was only told that I have to turn in something. I only had 10 days to do it, to pay my fees and 10 days to do it. I work, I do a lot of late-night security work and so forth, so I just submitted what I thought would get me the hearing. The packet, naturally, since then, I've had a lot of time, when I get home from work and so forth, to start putting a packet together, and I hope you'll accept it in that vein. I hope that answers, Mr. Town, as to why that occurred. I had no idea that I had to submit everything to request a hearing. As you know, I couldn't have put all that together in the 10 days that were allotted to me if I had the time. So I don't know, I'd like to use the rest of my time, but I think we all want to go home here pretty soon. Thank you again. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Salazar? Thank you very much, Mr. Salazar. And is there any more discussion with staff at all? And I'll close the public? No, no, just the appellant has a right rebuttal. No, the applicant. He wants to call Mr. Hallwig back up. Right. Okay. Okay, sure. Mr. Hallwig, would you come back up to the microphone again? Commissioner Adam has a question, and if you state your name and City Residence again for the record.
Yes, thank you. Gerald Hallwig at 1262 Boquet Circle, and I'm happy to come back up.
And Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Did you consider a horizontal expansion when you started this whole thing?
Yes, I did, and we looked into it very thoroughly, and there just is not enough pad area to accommodate the necessary addition that we wanted. And we have a turnaround requirement that we have to have and maintain up there, and we have to put in a turnaround in order to comply with the second-story addition. And that gives us just enough room on the pad in order to accommodate the side parking and the turnaround, so therefore, we really didn't have the room to do any additional one-story. And as long as I, as long as you brought me back up here, let me just make a couple of comments, just as a corrective item, if you don't mind.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I just have to ask you these-
Sure.
-quick questions. The second, Dr. Burry brought up an issue about some trees planted around the gazebo. Hadn't you said you had not planted trees, or?
That's exactly what I was just going to clarify, and I'm glad you asked me the question. Yes, a part of the requirement for the permit to put the gazebo where it is now was that I had to plant some mature plants around the upper arc in order to give a little privacy to Sandra Weston, I believe, or Niamh. And so therefore, we let her choose, and I, in addition to putting the plants, I put birds of paradise, I put 62 birds of paradise, I put 12 lilac bushes, and then, in addition to that, I staggered behind that very large Carolina cherry that we had brought in, and we planted those Carolina cherries in order to help give her the break where she wanted. And to my knowledge, she's very, very happy with what we chose, because we asked her for her input, and that's why we did what we did. We went a little bit overboard by putting in three different types, but the one that we put in initially, just were not growing fast enough. We have nothing but rock up there, and it takes me about three to four hours just to dig one hole for one tree, so I tried to take advantage of that, and we put in a number of extra plants. But in no way did we ever put in a pine tree. We never planted a pine tree. We would not plant a pine tree.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. And I'll call Mr. Salazar back up if you'd like to make any final comments to the discussion of what Mr. Hallwig and Commissioner Adam discussed.
I didn't know I was going to get the chance to come back up here. I'm going to regret not writing some notes, I'm sure, but I think I made my case, and you've heard it, and it's your decision at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and it's time for discussion with the Commission, discussion or motion. My hearing, any Commissioner Adam?
I could start a discussion with my fellow commissioners. First of all, let me just say I appreciate both gentlemen's cases this evening. I know you've really thought this out and taken a lot of time to present this to us. And, you know, these decisions are never easy, believe me. You both have points that make sense, but we do have to come to a decision this evening. And what I would start out by saying is that this business of the precedent that was cited in the staff report, I think, in fact, it actually ratifies the development pattern in Kevington. And I don't think Mr. Salazar disapproves that precedent. I don't think his argument works there. I think that the Planning Commission made a decision in '04 that one, basically, one-story houses would be on the west side and two stories on the east, and I don't think you make the case for that, that there's a break in this development pattern by Mr. Hallwig's And I have to say as well that I don't think this is an example of mansionization. I've seen mansionization. I mean, you know it when you see it. Eight, nine thousand, 10,000 square foot houses trying to be stuck in with 3,000 square footers. You know, I think this is within the realm of the homes in the tract, the floor area ratios are also within the realm, the heights within the realm. As far as the privacy issue, you know, staff points out it's 19 feet differential. I think the architect had a good point, I must say, when he said, you know, from an eye level, it's actually even greater, it's 25 feet, because nobody's obviously going to be standing on the roof looking, looking out. So I just, you know, my inclination is to, and I'd certainly like to hear from my other fellow commissioners, but my inclination, as I guess you can see where I'm going, is to not grant the appeal.
Commissioner Lund?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. Commissioner Adams, thanks for your comments too, and I want to echo our appreciation of how well thought out both these arguments are, and it's, it's very difficult when your individuals are talking about their individual pieces of property, you know, everybody has a right to a, to enjoy the use of their property and a conforming use of their property, and, you know, all things change over time. Certainly, my hair color has changed, and my body certainly isn't the same shape that it was when I was a younger person. Mr. Salazar, I appreciate your comments about being in law enforcement. I've got three and a half decades there myself, but sometimes I think that maybe in this case, we'd have to agree to disagree. We've got, when we look at these things as a Planning Commission, we look at things from a legal standpoint, and what the applicable rules and regulations are that the city has established, and, you know, we're looking at a project here that doesn't have any waivers. We're looking at a lot that isn't over-intensified, we're looking at a far, that is far below the average. It's not precedent-setting by nature. We've got a 19-foot differential at the end, you know, we can, we can go numbers back and forth, and very difficult to, maybe to come up with the exact number, but suffice it to say that there's a significant difference in height level between the appellant's property and the applicant's property. So, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to find anything that would be controversial, or anything that would contradict what the city allows and what the city considers to be good planning here. So I guess enough of that be said. So I'm going to recommend and move to deny the appeal of PPD 2007 707 11, and uphold the Community Development Department's decision to approve the application.
Commissioner Fisher?
I do agree with my fellow commissioners, Adam and Lund. Again, both, both sides gave great presentations, and, you know, we're strictly looking at this as, you know, does it fit, does it comply with all the rules and regulations of the city? Loss of privacy, I didn't, I don't see that, we can't consider that. I don't think it's massive. I don't think there's a direct line of sight into the neighbor's home, and the decrease in home values and so on, again, that's not something that we can consider. So with that, I will support Commissioner Lund's recommendation.
Any other comments to the motion?
And I also agree with the motion to deny the appeal. I think that the sedition is not really going to block his view, it'll block the view of the street, but nothing of the city and the lights that they see now. I think that it's well-designed, and there, as the other commissioners have said, they're not asking for any waivers on this project, which is unusual, and it's good. But our decisions have to be made, not with a gut feeling of whether we like something or don't like it, we have to follow the rules of the city. And so with that, I'm going to support the motion to deny the appeal. Further ending comments, Commissioner Lund?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, then I'll ask for a vote. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And there is a 10-day appeal period. We'll continue on. We'll continue on with our agenda, and I believe, Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 43 of your packet this evening is the upcoming tentative planning commission hearing agenda. We do have a number of applications all tied into the Costco and Seventh Day Adventist case coming before you in two weeks on November 24th. As well, we have at least one case currently planned for your consideration on December 8th. And then, looking already into 2009, we have the housing element tentatively scheduled for your consideration on January 12th as well as another cell site. So, a relatively busy schedule coming up. And then also, if I could just note on page 45 of your packet, previously, you had considered a cell site on Kimber Drive in Newbury Park. That case was denied by the planning commission and the applicant, which is T-Mobile, has appealed that decision. That will be heard by the city council on December 16th. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of the October 27, 2008 meeting. Commissioner Fisher?
Move approval of the minutes for the meeting of October 27, 2008.
Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. Are there any AB 1234 reports? And commission comments? And I'll start by hoping that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I would hope that our community would support our veterans and those in the military. I'm a Marine mom. My son's been in the service for 17 years and as active duty and as a reservist. And I plan tomorrow to be at the Canal Creek Park North as the MOWW will be giving a, having a ceremony. And it's really nice, usually, there's a high school band and a presentation. So, I hope that other people will look in the newspaper to see what is available. I think there is something up at Ivy Lawn, but there is something right here in our own community for Veterans Day, and we can't forget those military people, past and present. Commissioner Grumney?
I just wanted to also add, happy birthday to the Marine Corps. This is the 233rd birthday for the Marine Corps. One of our council members, Dennis Gillette, is a former Marine. So, happy birthday to a devil dog out there.
That's today. Any other commission comments? Then I'll adjourn the meeting to Monday, 6:30 PM, November 24, 2008. Good evening.